We are recording. Okay. I make the motion. I make the motion. I make the motion we come out of executive session.
Second, please.
Second.
Second, I have a motion on floor by Councilwoman Gray, seconded by Councilwoman Foreman. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to call for the question.
Second Chair Red Eagle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rebar.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray, yes. Councilwoman Harland.
Yes.
Councilwoman Redcorn.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. We've come out of executive. I do not have a motion at this time to come out of executive with an element. I did have a discussion update and also we talked about the AAPG and efforts of our being a part of the conference which is coming right up. With that, I'd like to go down under O Business. I have the AAPG. Councilwoman Foreman.
Thank you. I know that Councilmember Gray will have some updates for us, but I wanted to give everybody an update on a handout that we just got this last week. As all of you know, the D E M D put together a booklet a couple of years ago all about the Osage Reservation, our mineral estate, some of our history, some really nice maps. Well, they updated that and are making about fifty copies, I think, available for handout at our booth. And I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. I know that Lacy and Chairman Waller are in the process of getting those shipped to us.
Yes.
So that we can hand them out. But also, and this was a suggestion by Councilmember Rebar quite a while ago to get our logo on small thumb drives and put relevant information on them. Since we are only getting fifty booklets, I'm just wondering, and perhaps Councilmember Gray can look into this for us, if we can, and we have the digital version of this booklet, and a really good map with a land grid showing available acreage and leased acreage. If we can put that on a thumb drive also for handouts. And we could do it without the logo, but it'd be nice if we could at the last minute here get a few of those made with our logo on it. So that was my update. We've already talked about the other things that we needed to, so.
With that, Councilwoman, I agree with that. Also is that we're going to need to buy more thumb drives anyway. Have you seen the registration? It's now three times bigger than they thought it was going to be?
Oh, no. No, the last one was two hundred. That was yesterday.
Three hundred. I saw three hundred this morning. So with that being said, Councilwoman Gray, could you make a motion that I have for the Council, not only the expenditures for, I'd like to get three items for our breakout session, also the purchasing and postage for D E M D on this element and the expansion of possibly ordering more of the thumb drives with our logo on it? Could you make that in form of a motion?
Well, can I discuss something before I make that motion when I go?
Yes.
Okay. I like the idea of the thumb drives, but the thumb drives with the logo will run anywhere from five to eight dollars, depending on the quality of the thumb drive, if we want a cheap one or one that goes pay. Well, let me finish. But I also took notice of what Councilwoman Rebar said about doing a QR code. That QR code can accomplish the same things. And within that QR code, we can have that scan of that booklet. It can have other information that we have. That way, they scan it and it will send them to, whether it's a link, I think. I'm looking at Anna. That there are different. Pardon me?
Would you call Magnum? That was under their contract to get this QR code.
Yeah, the QR code is not a big deal. That is a small thing for us to do. It's the content that you put in there. So if we wanted the booklet in there, whatever we want, whatever we wanted on a thumb drive or do we want it on a QR code where they just come up to our booth and we've got the QR code, they can just scan it and they'll have those documents. So it's up to you all. What I'm going to be asking for is probably around, what do you think? Three thousand for everything is what would be a good number to get everything? Yeah. Okay. I'm prepared to make the motion and I'm just going to make it for the general information is that we are going to be getting the handout giveaway things at a cost for the conference at three thousand dollars.
Not to exceed three thousand.
Okay, not to exceed three thousand?
I have a question.
Let her finish.
I'll give a second and then we can go to discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, does that include gifts for our speakers?
This is the first time I've heard about gifts for our speakers. Our speakers?
Is this our?
This is not.
Breakout session.
At our breakout session.
Well, then we need to change the amount. What are you thinking about?
That's why I wanted to ask before you made your motion. Well, I would also like to know what it is you're buying for three thousand dollars.
Well, if you want it, if you want those, okay, so what we're buying for is not only for this event, but we're going to order in the amount that we can use them for shareholders, maybe our next mail out we have. Some of them are everything from the logo of our stickers that they can put on their computers, something similar to like that. Those are really hot items right now, computer laptop stickers. To have one that will be, you know, full color for for that. We've looked at any, many different little items that you're going to be handing out that isn't going to be cost effective. Unless you have something you want to go ahead and put in that you want, but.
Now, I just wanted, I was just curious about what you're buying for three thousand dollars and I still don't know.
Okay, well, just to get the stickers alone and we, okay, we're figuring this. We've got the attendance at this event. For any other future event that we have, we'll be able to, if you're going to buy something, it's more cost effective if we buy it in like a thousand. That way, we'll be able to use it because when we got here, there was nothing to hand out. So we didn't even have handouts, booklets or anything. So now that we can maximize by having instead of those fifty booklets, we'll still have those fifty booklets, but we'll also have that booklet on a QR code. And that is, that's how technology has moved. It used to be a real hot item to have that jump drive, thumb drive, but now it's a QR code that accomplishes the same thing. And it does, and it's less cost. I mean, that's only going to cost us a couple hundred to get that done.
Well, I love the idea of the QR codes, but I still would like to know what.
No.
Can you say it? What is it?
Well, I mean, they're just like little handout things, everything from we haven't really actually picked out the things that are logos outside of the stickers or stress balls or whatever. We're going to use that money to buy in bulk. So unless you have something like you want specifically, then say now. But if not, we'll be using this for this event or when we go to NAC, when we're in person again. It's best to just get it all at one time and have it accessible. And there are also, I mean, there's not a day that goes by that there's not a shareholder comes in that is working with Lacy on and we can give them like a shareholder little packet that they have or when we go to OSA meetings or when we go to the OPA. Or was it the, yeah. We need to have something so we can have maximize and market our mineral state. So unless you have something more in particular, oh, gotcha. But see, you know, I know a lot of people and I'll be honest, when I go and I get those thumb drives, I look at the stuff and then I erase it and then I use it for my own use. So unless we want to just go ahead and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, that's good.
But if we want to do something, we can do the thing. I am not anti thumb drive. We can order.
There are a lot more expensive.
Yeah, there are a lot more expensive. So we'll probably use a good chunk on that on thumb drives. That's probably all you can do. Yeah.
You are a code. QR code is the best route for this.
We could get some thumb drives, but if you just do, say eight dollars times, how many people are there? Three hundred?
I would like to stay in that number before we start buying too much bulk.
That's twenty four hundred if we do three hundred thumb drives.
Yeah. So, you know, back to the gift for speakers, you know, I think, you know, as long as we have, you know, there's that portfolio, maybe we could sequester a couple of those for our speakers that has our logo on it, which won't cost us anything, you know, or, you know, traditionally, we have given our speakers blankets. Now you're getting into the hundred and seventy nine dollar range for two blankets. So I just wanted to, you know, throw that out there. I think we ought to give our speakers who are taking their time and effort to prepare a presentation showcasing our mineral estate that, you know, we should give them something. And I talked to the chairman about this, so maybe he has some input on this.
We're taking the curve right now.
I have an idea. If you want me to just throw this out. I think if we, there are several Osage owned stores, I won't say which one.
Thank you.
What if we're able to go and get a logo of the minerals council, our logo on a T-shirt or we probably need to get some T-shirts for us anyway to work the booth. But then also or get Killers of the Flower Moon, a signed copy from David Grand. They're available at a couple of stores downtown. I think they run forty dollars apiece. And how many speakers do we have? How many speakers?
A couple at this time.
Susan?
Two.
Oh, well, then that's eighty bucks.
Well, we had three, but now we have two.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, so I think if we want to give a signed book by David Grand, that would be a gift idea. I'm just trying to give him a couple of blankets to.
Those are things that, I mean, you know, those are things we can kind of take care of outside of this, you know, I think we've talked enough about.
All I'm asking for, because like I said, to order these things at cost. So, I mean, it's a, it's a cost, but we're, you know, we want to have nice gifts to take away, so.
I'd like reaching out to my Osage vendor and also we could always look at what the nation or museum has.
Right. I agree.
Thank you.
So I will be making, my motion stands at three thousand for.
I second it.
Yes.
Call for the questions.
Councilwoman Rebar.
Yes.
Councilwoman Redcorn.
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
That's Chairman Waller.
I said Chairman Waller. She said Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray, yes. Councilwoman Harland.
Yes.
The motion passes.
And also, we're going to have a meeting on the first. Any kind of emergency element that comes up to that time, Lacy and I will bring it to your attention, Council. With that, I'd like to move on down to the O Business, item B, gas measurement rules. I think this is a discussion topic. I've read the A G A page three items that Councilwoman Foreman sent out. Councilwoman Foreman.
I'm sorry, which one are we on?
We are on the A G A, the Osage.
Oh, I'm sorry, the gas measurement rules. I apologize. When you said A G A, I was thinking AAPG. Sorry about that. The gas measurement rules are posted. You all were provided the same rules a couple of months ago. And I think it's, I just think it's time that we adopt them. They have been vetted by two gas measurements specialist consultants. One with the D, the last one was with the D E M D. Our first one, of course, was Teddy Pledger, who actually wrote the rules and then we revised them a little bit. Those revisions by D E M D can be seen on the document you're looking at. I just think it's time that we adopted these rules. And of course, later, we'll have to figure out how to enforce them and what to do with them, but I think they're good rules. They're all Teddy Pledger said that they should cover everything we need for appropriate and accurate gas measurement. So I'm making a motion that we adopt, that this minerals council adopt these gas measurement rules.
I have a motion on floor. I need a second.
I second.
I second. I have a motion on Councilwoman Foreman, seconded by Councilwoman Redcorn. Discussion? Hearing none, call for the question. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Rebar.
Thank you. I'm all in favor of, you know, drafting rules and adopting rules. I'm very much in favor of doing it, but we haven't done it yet. I know that Susan's prepared some recommendations with, what I saw was had a lot of red lines and blue lines. Well, I guess that's open for discussion and refinement. So are we going to have a work session to work on those rules? My question.
Yes, sir.
We certainly can.
So we're not adopting all that because what you sent over that I saw on board bucket, I think it was board bucket, was some language and some of it was in black ink, some red and some blue.
Well, that was to show you, as I explained, may I?
Yes.
As I just explained, the last revisions that show up in red are the suggestions from the D E M D natural gas consultant and expert, which I thought were great enhancement of the rules that Teddy gave us. So I left it in red line, that's called red line, just so you could see the, you could see what the revisions were. Now, if the council prefers to have a working session to go over all of these, I don't have a problem with that. We can table this and, you know, set up a special working session.
Well, you know, if I may, I still had before I thought. Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to go over this for those people, for those that would be interested in doing so, not that everybody would want to. But some of us could, I'm sitting on an informal setting, so we just talk back and forth like we are right now. Say, well, what does this mean? And one of the first things that came to mind were some of these things is we need to do this and we need to do that and this and that. Well, but it didn't say who. Who's going to do that? And who's going to pay for it? Some of the stuff said the O M C is going to do this. Well, you know, I think it's great to reserve the right to do it, but should we have the expense of doing it? Should we, should we take this over around the corner to the B I A and expect them to do it? Think, here's what we expect. This is industry standard and we expect you to do industry standard and here it is. And have them do it. So I'd like to discuss these. Who's going to do what? Some of it has to do with the producer and that's fine. But I just think it needs a little conversation about, especially explaining to those of us who are not familiar with the subject matter in much detail. And I am for the most part, not completely, I'm comfortable with it. I'm more speaking for the other council members at this point that I think we ought to kick this around and go over and explain it. And, and, and we'll discuss whose responsibility it really is, if we can make the B I A responsible.
So are you asking rescind this motion and table it for our working session? Because if you're doing that, I'll be glad to do it.
Excuse me, excuse me. Second, second was by Councilwoman Redcorn. Do you agree to that?
I agree. I have a comment too, if I can make one.
Yes, at this time, please.
I like the regulations. I like when she started this process, when she worked with Pledger and then D E M D. This is long overdue. As far as enforcement, I think we take these laws as B I A will, but we're under the Constitution and we could ask our O M P D and how we're going to enforce these out there in field. That we ought to have that conversation too. And I think this, if this works, then I think, you know, if we expand more our operations, we keep doing this for these little elements that we don't like out there that's happening. I e, we discuss something in executive, that topic. Stuff like that, we can pass. We do have that right under the Constitution. So to me, this is testing waters. Let's pass them, but I'm okay with my second to, if you guys want to dig through. But I really want to take these laws and just stick it under the nose of the nation. Now what? We want these enforced and so, and see what happens. So, you know, I think, I think it's a bold move, but I like it.
I like it too, but Chairman.
Yes, sir.
When these, when, when Councilwoman Foreman first drafted these, and I think it's wonderful that she's taken the time and effort and used her expertise to assist us with it, but I kind of thought this was towards us redoing this, our own regulations.
It is.
To replace the CFRs. And this is just one item that needs to be addressed in our regulations. So is that what, and so I see that Councilwoman Foreman has her hand out, so does Councilwoman Gray. So I'll just be real quick. That was my understanding when she first presented this with these is that, you know, I'm taking a stab at the, the natural gas part of it for our new regulations to replace the CFRs with, and here it is. If that's what we're doing, you know, let's, let's make that clear. So this is just an independent set of regs, independent of everything else. If I'm not mistaken, this is a, just one little, well, not little, one section of our regs that we are trying to replace the CFRs with. I just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Yes, sir. That will be the directive after the council consensus that it is sent over as a recommendation to the insertion on the CFR Code twenty five to not only see your oil is under A P I regulatory, your gas is not. So that's, that's exactly where it should go. I have a motion on the floor to table. I need a second.
Hearing none, second.
Second. I have a motion on the floor.
I modified my second so to agree with Ms. Foreman.
Redcorn, second.
Yes, Councilwoman Foreman has a motion to table at this time on the floor.
So, and I second.
Thank you. I have a motion on floor by Councilwoman Foreman, seconded by Councilwoman Redcorn to table the items under the gas regulations. Call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Redcorn.
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rebar.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray, yes. Councilwoman Harland.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. I'd like to go on to next agenda item. Meeting minutes, please.
Chairman, Chairman, I had a, I had another, I should have been seen on the N C A I. I had.
Ma'am, I wish you would make that form of a motion at this time, please.
I make the motion that any council member who wants to attend the virtual National Congress of American Indians virtual meeting be allowed to go to attend.
I'll second that. Have any discussion? Hearing none, call for the question.
No, I had my hand up and.
Yes, Councilwoman Foreman.
Is this a virtual, does that require registration and no doubt, an expense?
Yes, ma'am.
And what would that expense be?
Registration only. We will not be going other than registration.
Okay, I was just curious how much it costs.
I can tell you here.
What is the deadline to register?
Well, we probably need to register.
Next month, sir.
Well, it's, it's October eleventh through fourteenth. They're going to be talking about a lot of the infrastructure and energy. And I think it, it's time for, not only, I know I attend, I've been a member for a long time, but this is, this is really important with all the monies that are coming down that we be in the know. I'm sorry, I can't, oh, here it is, membership registration. I can tell you how much it is here.
Is our mineral council considered a member?
Well, you'll be an individual member. The tribe's the member and they have the vote, they have the voting block of on, and I believe it's chief and speaker.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I can't find the amount on the website right now. Hold on. Oh, it's two hundred and fifty for a member. Yeah, I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars. I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at this. For if you are new, it'll be a hundred, two fifty. If you're a member, it'll be a hundred and fifty. It's pretty.
If we're going to attend, we should become a member and then register.
Yeah, well, I mean, they'll include that. I think it's forty dollars. And so it'll be a total of probably one ninety, then you're a member for the year.
That's correct.
So anyway, I just want to make that motion that we make it available to any of the seven who want to attend and you they'll get, they'll send you a link, a login and then look at the agenda and you'll see where they'll have caucuses and also breakouts on natural resources and there are subcommittees underneath that that will cover energy and minerals.
Thank you. Any other questions? Call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Rebar.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman.
No.
Councilwoman Gray.
Sorry, yes.
Councilwoman Harland.
Yes.
Councilwoman Redcorn.
She repeat the question.
To attend the national, if any council member wants to attend N C I virtually.
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Chairman, can I just make a comment that Osage Nation has been a charter member tribe from when they first started this, from Council Second, Second Chair's, family members were involved in the forming of this organization. Also, I have family members who have been longstanding, pulled from the vice president position to second would be Georgia Ann Robinson. We've had many family, tribal members, our Osage family here, that have been and have fought everything from termination to our mineral state. And this is something that the tribal council has always been a part of and also the minerals council. So I thank you all for that support and that we continue to fight for sovereignty for our, our people here at Osage and also the protection of our, our land and our asset, the mineral state. Thank you.
Thank you. And on that consideration, on the tribal council, we always stayed with this as the option to get something said in an arena that will hear you. I've sat on many committees for them and I am in full support of any of us being that. Or in case you are asked or nominated, I would like to advise you that we would be happy to promote any of that element as far as a council. Thank you all. Let's go on to the last agenda item. Meeting minutes, please. I need a motion.
I make a motion, Chairman, that we approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Second, I have a motion on floor by Second Chair Red Eagle, seconded by Councilwoman Gray. Any discussion?
Call for the question.
Call for the question, please.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray, yes. Councilwoman Harland.
Councilwoman Harland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Reddickel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rebar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Chairman, I have, as Second Chair, if I may, I have a report on the pipe yard.
Yes, sir.
I met with Teddy Sue Witcraft yesterday and she got just everything that she wants out of the yard and the warehouse and she got it all out of there yesterday. And she's gonna report to Natasha under Melissa Curry and close out, close out the, finalize the deal, so.
As soon as the ink's dried, let's put our locks on it.
Yes, sir. It will need some locks and probably, I would suggest some cameras too and, and whatever, we'll discuss that at a later date, but, but it's, it's pretty much closed out now as soon as she turns it into Natasha.
Yes, sir. That's what I'm waiting on is a transfer and then we will start inclusion. I wanna go look at also the structures. I haven't been inside yet, but now that I know they're out, yes, sir, we'll get right to it next week. Thank you, council.
The warehouse, the loading dock needs repaired, the stairs need repaired and there's the front door, the main office in the front needs a door. There's a few other items and I was also suggesting, we put, put out bids on cleaning it up. There's still some structures there that, some tank, some tank batteries were, were on horizontally, you know, that need to be cleaned up and the, you know, the yard overgrown on the brush and all that. I would love to commend the secretaries by bringing out the minutes to, to the attention of the council members and so we can look at it before the meeting. I think that's a, that's a good move on their part. Thank you.
Way we know. Thank you, council.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. I have a motion on floor by Councilwoman Gray, seconded by Councilwoman Redcorn. No discussion, call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Reddickel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rebar?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council. Have a great afternoon.